You know, my sister lived in the building, Anthony, there, Hill Creek. They moved that Saturday. I'll probably fill it up with people need rehab. Is that Mullen Building?
That's the rehab and health of those here.
There's supposed to be some county councils or some way to school. I don't know what it is. They're rebuilding that thing. My sister lived in the building, Hill Creek, downtown. I've got five thousand square foot, got nine rooms, nine bedrooms.
Frankie, do you hear you said?
No, fourteen kids in the still set. She had shut it down because her lectures, she went to town for a while. I hang out there. The main brands are mainly employees. So it cost her three thousand dollars from law and court bail. And then Frost took one up. So she was complete, because they had them cut the game and cut the life. She had one woman been with her thirty-two years. She has no, no, that was a patient. See, she come over her husband at fifty-five. Burke, she shut down. She said she decided otherwise she could stay. There's some side there. Well, I've got a real solution to that, but they don't want to hear it. What patients they saw in my, they don't work, you know?
I don't know, that's how people live. That's more of a friend sale. Break, most of them, break here. But I can also, some costs.
Let's see, we need Kristen now. Is Kristen, have you heard from her? Is she coming? Okay, good deal, we'll wait for her. Let me make sure that my phone is off. It is. Seth, how are you doing?
Good.
How are you doing? Is your speaker off?
Yes.
This meeting is a joint public hearing with the Richlands Planning Commission and the Town Council. So I'll call this meeting to order. Please let us stand for the invocation, thank you. Heavenly Father, thank you again for the opportunity to meet tonight and to be with the Planning Commission and the members of our community and the members of council and our staff to do the best that we can to make the best decisions that we possibly can make for the town of Richlands. Thank you for this beautiful day and for the opportunities of life that you've given us. We can never say thank you enough. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have before us an agenda and I think that there is, there's not a call for corrections of this, but members of council and members of the Planning Commission, do you have the agenda before you? Okay, do you have an agenda, Greg? Okay, all right. So, I want to make a small correction. If you look at Roman numeral four, the time should be, well, he's corrected right here, I'm sorry, John, he's giving us correct.
Yeah, everybody should have a copy and what is in yellow is slightly different than what was on the original agenda. And there's copies out in the lobby if anybody like one.
Thank you, John. So we have a corrected copy here and what I was going to draw the attention to was the timing on Roman numeral six. It is 5:40 PM and Roman numeral seven is 5:50 PM. Okay, so we will begin. We have before us the members of the Planning Commission. We have Vice Chairman Randy Smith and we have Secretary Michelle Elzwick and Barry Alley and Greg Horn. Thank you very much. And so we will open the public hearing. Hearing number one is to address Mobile Home Park and says address. So is there an address that we need to be aware of, John?
This is, I believe it's to a Lake Park Drive. This is a mobile home park that has been there for some time. The ownership has changed and since the ownership's changed, they've had to reapply for the conditional use permit to continue to use that as a mobile home park. So essentially, we don't anticipate a whole lot of change, anything really different. I believe there's two mobile homes out there, they may be adding a third because they have the space. But essentially, the ownership's changed, so they need to reapply for the conditional use permit and they've requested council and planning commission approve that.
Okay. So at this time, the commission, I'll speak for the commission if it's okay, Randy. He's the vice chairman, Elliot, welcome. The council and the planning commission would entertain any public comment on the mobile home park and Lake Park, right?
At this time, we didn't have anybody sign up, but I'll defer to the mayor.
Okay. No one has signed up to speak, but is there anyone who would like to speak? Speak now. Yes, please. Come on up and say your name, please. Oh, that's right, welcome, I'm glad you're here. Yes, sir, just to the podium, and both of you just say who you are for the benefit of the clerk.
This is Greg Burris. Greg Burris, I'm Teresa Burris, we're the new owners of the lake park. We just wanted to let you know some of the new updates that we would like to improve on it. We are looking into having pavement done, we already got an estimate for that. It'd be going from the entrance to the out, so that'll be taken care of. We're also looking at putting up new lighting, so there'd be more lighting there.
Okay.
And we've already got, you was talking about adding some more mobile homes. We kind of bought this thinking everything was, I'm just a coal miner. I work evening shift, fourteen hours a day, at night, most of the time.
It's an honorable profession that has seen a lot of people through here.
It's about to kill me right now. We'd actually bought this back in January and we even went on and purchased newer mobile homes thinking that, you know, we kind of just get a building permit and pull them in. So now, that's why we're going through all this, this was all new, we've never dealt anything with a town, you know, in.
Yes, sir.
And so we're sitting on about roughly thirty thousand dollars worth of mobile homes we're having to pay lot rent on. And then Nathan King, I believe, was, he's really helped us out.
Yes, sir.
Took us in the direction we need to go.
Okay.
But yeah, I don't know if this meeting answers our questions, if it just moves on, you know, what we got to do.
Well, the general procedure is, and I'm sure you've worked with the town manager and with Nathan King and the application process. As I understand it, I talked to John today briefly, it's an existing part, but it, the conditions are, however you want to put it, need to be updated and so you're doing that physically and we want to do it lawfully, so that's why this is here. And any other public comments can be entertained at this time and we do thank you. And anything else you have to say is welcome. And then the commission, after we have our public hearings, will gather in the room over here and make recommendations and they'll do that publicly during regular council.
Okay, I've got one more statement.
Yes, sir.
Asphalt, we're wanting to do underground utilities, just if you got a tree files or whatever, you're not having to wait on AEP or the town power company. We're wanting to do all underground utilities. And in order to do that, what I was going to ask is if we could get them pulled in, get utilities run to them and then go on with that. I'd hate to put in asphalt, twenty, thirty thousand dollars worth of asphalt and then have to cut it up to run utilities.
Right.
That was the only other, I was going to ask for an extension on that.
Well, I would say that would be the business of the manager and also would be taken into account by the planning commission when they make a recommendation. Bye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the proposed mobile home park in Lake Park?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question. So there's two mobile homes there now, how many slots, John, are in?
I believe there is one more. Is that one more?
There's a total of seats.
One, two, three, four.
I got you, I got you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious.
Okay. Any other comments on this particular issue? Okay, we will close hearing, public hearing number one and at 5:35, are we on time?
Yep, you're getting started.
Okay. We now have the second public hearing. This hearing is now open. It's regarding a subdivision and I would defer to the town manager to explain what this is and move forward.
Essentially, we have a parcel of property out on Birmingham Road. The owner has requested that they subdivide that. I'm getting ready, Frank's getting ready to put up a copy of the full subdivision plat. Essentially, the intent would be to subdivide it so then they can either sell off parcels or put mobile homes or homes on these parcels. And to be able to afford with that, the subdivision, it takes council approval. So we wanted to have the joint public hearing with the planning commission and council to allow any public comment on this. And as of right now, we didn't have anybody that has signed up for public comment, but as I said, I'll defer to the mayor.
Is there, thank you, John, before we have any questions, I do have a question. Is there anyone here, present, who would like to speak regarding the subdivision, proposed subdivision, which could be divided, hi Jerry, into homes or mobile home lots? Is that correct, Jerry? Jerry, would you state your name for the benefit of the clerk?
Jerry Dunford. I'm one on this property. All of these are one acre lots and they are, when we had it done, and I honestly didn't know all this wasn't done, we probably done this ten, twelve years ago. Richard was here, you know, then.
Richard Vance, yes, sir.
Yeah, and we was doing it, but anyway, we've set it up for mobile homes or to build on. No single wides or one acre lots, they're all a hundred, about three hundred. Hundred foot up the road, three hundred foot back. And I've already got two double wides there and I've got one, there's one lot there that's one point six seven tenths of acre, I've got it for sale now. But I have to have all this done before I can sell anything or two people lives there. Ethan Horns, which is my stepson, and Ray Fields lives in two that joins it and I'm giving them another acre because it's that mountainside, it's no benefit to anybody. And I'm giving them another acre apiece and that's what I got into here was when I found out I had come and have all this done.
Yeah, Jerry, thank you very much, I have a couple of questions. Is this near the pond? Is this near the pond? Your pond over on Birmingham? Don't you have a water feature over there, like a pond?
Not there now, no.
Oh, it's gone, okay.
Yeah, it's been gone. I filled that in about eighteen year ago, after 2002. Now, I've still got ponds up there, but.
Now, I don't remember it that way, Jerry, because I was there less than eighteen years ago. Go ahead, just to tell you what I think, okay?
Well, I bought that in 2002 and I filled that one pond that was there, I did fill it up right after that.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you. And then how many lots, how many, I can't count that from here, how many proposed lots are you wanting? How many lots, can you hear me, Jerry?
No.
How many lots do you want?
Well, I want all into the, if anybody's been up through there, the ones that are flat up the bottom, up in the road.
Side of Junkyard.
I think it's two, three, four, eight, five.
Okay, and then my only other question is, it is, John, what is it currently zoned over there where he wants this changed?
It is R2.
R2, general residential, okay. So I guess the planning commission has studied this and some, okay.
We had that rezoned, if you remember.
Yes, I do. It was general agricultural and it was rezoned to help you with the residential.
Yep.
I remember. Okay, thank you, Jerry. Is there anyone else who would like to speak from the audience? Okay, anyone have questions for members of council or for the commission? Seth, did you have a question?
I just was curious, when you, he kept saying mobile homes, but he meant double wides, not single wides.
He said double wides, that's my understanding and I would ask that be noted for the commission?
Well, I don't think, it goes against, you can't put them in there, there's town ordinance preventing, you couldn't put a single wide, correct?
Not really. There are conditional uses that get into that. We've landed, since we had a moratorium many years ago on single wides, we, that has been lifted and we have in, we have allowed many single wides in places. Not that, because there was an existing single wide there.
Right, right, right. I understand that, but not.
But there are no conditions ever placed, so you'll know that.
Yeah.
Okay, they help you?
Not really, but yeah.
Best I can do. Okay, commission members, thoughts? Anyone else have a question about this particular piece of property that Jerry's requesting be considered for double wides? Okay. Commissioner, are you satisfied at this point? Okay. Okay, we will close this public hearing and we're 5:40, I guess we're all good. Okay. So we are on public hearing number three, which is, it says drug rehab added use to a B2 zoning. So John, I will ask you to talk about that, please.
Okay. So first, I'm going to pass out a copy of the zoning map. I'll take one and pass it down. I'll give everybody a couple of seconds. Here's some smaller ones, if anybody needs one.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so, yeah. Does anybody have, who would like a copy of the map that they have at, Planning Commission members of council and anyone in the audience?
All right.
Okay. Would you care to amplify on this, please, John?
So we received a request from Spiro Health to put in a, I think it's a drug rehab, I don't know if that's the correct term, but essentially that's what they've requested. And to do so, they've requested that the B2 commercial zone allow the added use, which is in the ordinance in your agenda packet, I believe it was HH for hospital health, things of that nature, that would actually allow that. So you, if this is approved and recommended by the planning commission and approved by council, those types of businesses would be allowed in all of the green area on this map. They are looking at a specific location, which is, I believe it's the Mullins Building, the building that has the El Dorado in it, is where they're specifically looking at putting one in, but the request would allow it in all these, you know, the whole green area.
Okay. Okay, so.
You're talking about methadone, Suboxone?
Well, I have a question.
Sorry, I apologize.
I want to ask a couple of questions here before we get into our discussion here. Thank you, members of the commission and members of the council. So we have before us a request to add a drug rehab to the B2 zoning. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
We, you two signed up.
Oh, yeah, and we have, I'm sorry, we have two. One is, first is Pauline Hagy. Or would you like, go ahead, sir, are you okay with that, Pauline?
Either way you want to do it.
Go ahead, you're at the podium, go ahead.
I'm Jesse Keim, I'm the Senior Director of Development for Spiro Health. I have put clinics throughout Virginia, we have sixteen clinics operating in Virginia now. We're enrolled in Virginia's Medicaid program, Virginia's arts program. We have eighty-three clinics across six states, I'm based out of Nashville, Tennessee. Senator Bill Fress is on our Board of Directors, he's former senator for the state. And what we do is treat patients with opioid use disorder and more broadly substance use disorder. We're not a methadone clinic, we don't have any methadone clinics in our company. What our operation looks like from optics standpoint is a counseling office. So there'd be a physician or a nurse practitioner on site, they will prescribe medication as needed. We use buprenorphine and vivatrol, buprenorphine goes under the brand name Suboxone. So buprenorphine, Suboxone has buprenorphine, which is a partial opioid agonist. It stops cravings and withdrawals and it has naloxone in it. So they're taking a combo of buprenorphine and naloxone. Naloxone is what Narcan is. So patients that take Suboxone stop their cravings and withdrawals. If they use heroin or fentanyl, they can't get high from it. So it's actually a very good medication. And then we'll have a master's little counselor on site. We do group counseling, similar to NA or AA, and then we do case management. The arts program pays us to help patients write resumes, look for jobs, help coordinate other appointments, other, you know, primary care, dental appointments. We help coordinate transportation and find food banks and, you know, affordable housing. So we work really well with the state, we work well with drug courts, with law enforcement, with hospitals and inpatient and other outpatient programs.
Okay, thank you. We have another person who would like to speak and that is Pauline Hagy. Pauline, would you please come up and state your name for the benefit of the record, please?
I'm not available here for any of this because I'm here in the paper. And so I'm glad that I've got copies, generally, while I'm safe in case someone else is feeling better.
Okay, I'm trying to, are we at full volume here?
I'll pass these out.
Okay.
I know some of you and some of you don't, I'm Pauline Brown Hagy. My family has owned and developed property in the Richlands area for more than a hundred and thirty-five years. So we're old time residents. These properties are owned by Corporation of Ray Brown and then by our family partnership, which is Eldridge Brown Company. Since our mother's death, both my brothers, Reggie and George Brown, and I have equal ownership and responsibility for these properties. We take, you know, this seriously and we use our resources to maintain these entities. And we just recently have built a new structure in town. We appreciate the interest of all the petitioners, the committee members, the town officials and other people attending this because we know all of us are working to make Richlands a better place. We want to make it better advocating for business economically, for the aesthetics of the town and then also for the social activity of the town. When we heard this information about the possibility of some type of drug rehab facility and I could not hear you, I was sitting over here, so I don't know the parameters of this. I don't know whether it's going to be a methadone clinic or treatment or counseling or whatever. But it did upset us a little bit because having a drug rehab facility in the middle of town sends a certain message. And we thought, you know, so many businesses and civic organizations and individuals revitalizations, you know, groups have done a great deal of work, you know, make a lot of effort making improvements in town. We have a group called Ramp Up Richlands that's done a lot of work in this area. And it's encouraged new building, it's encouraged renovation, rehab of existing buildings. There have been so many things that have happened even during the COVID, I've been surprised, you know, people putting new things in and trying new things. And so we thought, you know, all this is done to enhance the public appearance and the commercial presence of town to make it more attractive to visitors, potential new businesses, the development of new recreational venues to bring programs and events. There've been the Chasing the Wild Boar event, which is a nationally known event. Then we've had the Little League Championship Games to showcase the town as a destination. The hosting of these events have had a positive effect because it's brought people in, it's enhanced our reputation. There's been a great economic boost from this, having, you know, participants and parents and spectators come in. There've been local festivities for citizens and visitors, we have, we have different holiday events that bring people in the area. We have like the Honey Festival, just a special thing. Just in June, there was the Summer Fest and the dedication at the Section Foreman's House. And the next two weeks are going to be two events, I noticed, the Sunday Fun Day and the Rock the Clinch Celebration. So these, these efforts and developments and activities have had one thing in common, they've occurred in the town of Richlands. Not Claypool Hill, not, you know, Cedar Bluff, they've, in Richlands, they contribute to the overall ethos of Richlands and serve to enhance the appearance and reputation of the town. That's one reason why we're, as a family, are concerned about the possible development of the rehab facility in the middle of town. It's going to undermine some of the efforts that have been expanded to maintain the position of the town of Richlands as a, you know, a competitive destination, a decidedly integral part of Tazza County. And you have to admit, there's some competition between Tazza and Richlands on doing this. So, you know, why would we want to do something that might bring us down a little bit? And my last thing, I have a couple of questions, what chilling effect might a drug rehab facility have on the continued success of these efforts? Will its presence affect the continuation of larger, more far-reaching events and the success of local gatherings? What would be the impact on the values of properties and proximity to this facility? What effect will it have on the decision of owners who might be thinking of opening new businesses and the footprint of our commercial area? Would the allowance of another such facility in Richlands diminish the reputation of the community to the point that it's thought that, gosh, things must be so bad in Richlands, they need another drug rehab area? We've seen this zoning commission is in place for the specific purpose of protecting the history and the integrity and the future direction of Richlands. And that's why, you know, we, we just have some concerns and wanted to address those.
Thank you, Pauline. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on, these are the two people who signed up, Pauline and Jesse Keim, how do you say your name, Keim? Keim, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time regarding the proposed drug rehab added to the B2 zoning? Anyone else at all? Okay. Any questions from the commission or the council?
What's the size of the proposed facility?
I don't know. Would you like to talk about that for a minute, please?
The size of the facility is around thirty-five hundred, four thousand square feet, something like that. I believe it's about four thousand square feet, it'll have a group room, it'll have exam rooms, they're basically counseling offices, it'll have. It'll have a lab area, we drug test our patients. Our patients need to be coming off of illicit substances. And then it'll have a lobby area, reception, and that's about it.
And how many patients do you estimate dosing a day?
25 patients a day. We don't dispense medication on site. They're there for a counseling visit. If the provider sees need that they need medication, they would go to a pharmacy and fill the prescription there. And it's sent electronically through, through the EMR records. And I would just mention too, that we help patients get their lives back to get to the point where they can be working members of society again, where they get jobs.
I think what I'm, I'm asking questions because I think it's important. There's a delineation between what you're doing and a methadone clinic. But if you're not cautious, and I want to make sure you get the information out, that, because we have a methadone clinic in our community and everybody's driven by there on dosing times. And it's an absolute zoo.
Yeah.
You know, hundreds of cars, traffic backed up, it's always crazy. So that's why I'm asking questions, because I want, you know, I want, I want to understand for myself, because I don't know how your operation works.
Well, we are not a methadone clinic. Our, our business hours are normal hours, nine to five. Patients are scheduled appointments. So 25 patients per day is the max that we would schedule. Methadone clinics traditionally are open fairly early in the morning. Patients line up outside to get a dose every day. That's, that's not the same thing that we do. Our, our office looks like a counseling office.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions?
How often are your patients seen?
Early on, they come weekly. And then if they do well, if they're not taking illicit substances, they can go to bi-weekly and eventually monthly. The state, depending on what insurance they have, have some regulations about that. So I'm not sure on the specifics. But usually it's, it's weekly at first, but then we, we want to get them to a point where they're doing well enough, they're attending group counseling, where they become functioning again and they can have a job and not have to worry about coming to an appointment every week.
Okay.
So also, just a question, and I guess I'd ask legal about this. When you make this, this proposed zoning change, that opens us up. Is it, are you, are you able to delineate between this type of clinic and, say, a methadone clinic?
The Richland Town Code already has a definition for hospital slash special care. And it just didn't fit in zoning anywhere, did not have a place for it. So really, this is just to put the, the definition, which is an institution rendering care primarily for mental or feeble-minded patients, epileptics, alcoholics or drug addicts. So that's the definition. And what we're here for today is whether that is acceptable to put in B2, in the B2 zoning area.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's, I don't see why you already don't have that and, you know, counseling is offering that same type of service. I just want to make sure that if you, if planning commission did decide to make this change, that you're not going to open it up to where you can have dispensing facilities, which is a completely different thing than what these folks are doing.
What we also have in the proposed ordinance is that HH would be allowed as hospital special care with conditional use permit. So they would still have to come in and it would be a special.
Gotcha, would be a vote every time.
Correct.
Okay. It, and it would be in all of the B2? That's the proposed change?
That's my biggest, that is my biggest concern. Sounds like you guys have addressed it.
And from a licensing perspective, where the state of Virginia recognizes us as a physician practice. Methadone clinics require certificate of need. It requires highly regulation from the DEA. I mean, that, that's nothing that, that we do or want to attempt. And so again, generally, we can go into any area that is a professional service or allow for medical clinics, any other, most counties that I go to.
And no medicine dispensing on site?
Correct.
No pharmacy on site? Okay.
What's your procedure if someone comes in and they're not adhering to the treatment? What's your procedure?
Well, if you dismiss the patient, then they're going to go back to the street and use whatever they can find on the street. So we continue to ramp up our care. So we might require them to come more frequently to make sure they're attending group counseling. Some patients require a higher level of care than we can do. And so that we, we would refer them to an inpatient facility to detox. Some patients are not ready for treatment. And then we have patients that leave us and then do come back when they're ready for treatment. Not all addiction treatment clinics are the same. I mean, some of them basically prescribe and don't offer any other social support. And, you know, but I don't want to pass judgment, you know, to other clinics. I don't know who, I really don't even know who you have here. I just know what we do. I know that our patients want to be in treatment. They're not going to go through the group counseling and all we require of them just to get a prescription. You know, there's other places they can go, that they can go do that. So our patients kind of are highly regimented. And so patients that aren't doing well, we try to refer up to a higher level of care if they'll allow us, or they may just choose to leave us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, members of the commission, do you have the information you will need? Okay. I'll close this public hearing and we will go on to public hearing number four. This is for off-road vehicle use on designated roads.
And mayor, it's going to be off-road recreational vehicle?
So we need to add this and correct it, is that right?
That is correct.
So members of council and commission, on Roman numeral seven, it should say Did everyone make that change accordingly? Thank you. Okay. John, would you care to comment on this, please?
This is something that we spoke about at our last council meeting. Spoke briefly with the planning commission about it. There's a draft ordinance in your full agenda packet that really kind of lines out exactly what we discussed at the last council meeting. The names of each street, each, you know, each cross section that, you know, they can be allowed where they can't be allowed. So this is just kind of the point where we're going to allow the public to make any comments that they have on what's being proposed.
Okay. Okay, so this is, the public hearing is open regarding off-road recreational vehicle use on designated roads. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask questions or make a statement, really? We want to hear the public regarding this recreational vehicle use. Ernest, would you come up and state your name, please?
Ernest Edgell. My questions are, I lived in a community once that has, they have that now, Gilbert, West Virginia. And they keep pretty strict rules on that. They had to have a, a permit to ride these trails. They can't just be anybody driving an off-road vehicle and noise. It's noisy in town now. Some nights you can't sit on the front porch and talk. So is the police department going to be able to enforce these rules?
Ernest, I wish I could answer that, but these, we have an, a draft ordinance here for it. And I think these are things that will need to be explored. I'm unable to tell you about the noise and the enforcement, exactly.
Well, you've got the laws on the books there. I just read in the paper that this, come out about this loud noise, mufflers and that type of thing. And that's possible in these, on these off-road vehicles.
I would ask that your question be answered probably by either the manager or officer or chief Gilbert. Jerry, are you able to, are you able to comment on that, Jerry, about the enforcement and noise? Come on up, Jerry, please. It will hear you better.
While he's coming, Mr. Mayor, two things. Mr. Edgell, all the people who are riding on these roads will have to have a permit. And that is permitted by the spearheaded trails. And they have a time limit. They cannot be out at 1:00 AM riding four-wheelers on the road. That's not, that's not how this works. So there are, it's, it is very regimented. This is something that's going to be good for our community and not a detriment. And it will be, and Jerry, I'll let Jerry speak to enforcement. But we've already addressed many of these issues. They have to have a permit. Spearheaded trails, the insurance is covering a lot of what's going on on there. And they all, and they have to be off the road, basically by, I think it's sundown, I'm not sure, sundown, I think.
They're right Arizona.
Well, I'm, I'm not here to speak against it. I just want to make sure that you put in the ground rules in to keep it to where they're not infringing on other people's rights.
And I think, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure everyone does. Would Jerry, would you like to comment on that, Jerry?
In Southern West Virginia, it's been a big boon to the economy.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Jerry, would you like to comment on that as the chief?
Yes, sir. As Seth said, it's daylight hours only, nothing after dark. We've already discussed that in our ordinance. As far as the noise, you know, we will regulate that as with the traffic laws that allows us. You know, we've been dealing with some regulations that has been passed, which limits us on noise on vehicles. But I think that's going back the other way now. And the governors begin to change some things and taking it back to where we have more enforcement ability. So all of those we will regulate and, you know, just try to keep. It sounds like it's going to be a good thing for us and that's what we're trying to do. But then again, like I said, there's rules that will only allow them out certain hours. They will not be allowed in residential sections. So there, there's a lot of regulations that's going to be put in place to, so people in the residence will not be disturbed.
Thank you, Jerry. Ernest, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Is there anyone else who has any comments, questions? Commission, do you have the information you need? Of the ordinance? Is that what you need, Michelle? You need a copy of the ordinance? So you can see what it's saying. Becca, is it possible you could make some copies for them? Okay, you have some? Okay, we'll, we'll get it for you. You need it. Thank you.